To join us at the table.
Can you move down a little bit if anything?
Sure.
Sure.
So where to come up now?
Sure. Yeah, you guys can sit over here.
Those kids are carriers.
Yes, they are.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I believe we have a quorum, so we can get started. Tonight, we have four wonderful groups to hear from. We have the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee, FATE, ACE, and FPAC. So this is going, and not necessarily in that order. But we're going to be starting with CTEC. And just so that everyone in the audience knows and the board members know, we are going to have a hard stop at 9:25, so that our superintendent can give us kind of a wrap-up for the evening and offer her comments as well, which I know you all want to hear. Each group is going to have 20 minutes. You do not need to use all that time. And we love you even more if you don't. But... And then also, just so everyone in the audience knows, we do have some refreshments, nice and healthy, up here on the counter. Feel free to come grab those as well. And just so board members can get it in their mindset, we're going to have about seven minutes per board member, and I'll have a hard stop at 7:00, and then we'll do go-backs. So with that, we're going to be starting with CTEC. So Patty and John.
Well, welcome, everybody, and thank you very much for this opportunity to tell you what we did over the last year. I do want to recognize John Whitman is sitting next to me, and he's our vice chair, and Jim McCormick is in the audience, who is one of our members also as being part. And TED has been our liaison this year as being part, and Beth Downey, along with all the program managers, are in the back that have really been instrumental in helping us to understand things. We have a little bit of an infographic done by one of our members. Actually, it's Stephanie Nugent, and it's Ryan's appointee. And what she did is try to put visually what our report is that might make it a little bit easier to understand some of the stuff that we're going with. First of all, our committee mission is to explore, investigate, and recommend communication methods, marketing delivery modalities, partnerships that enhance and expand CTE programs for the mutual benefit of students and the greater business community. We had, on our committee, you had appointees themselves. In addition, we had business members, and we had a student representative. And Nicholas Westerman has been for two years with us and was great in giving us the perspective of what the student was taking these classes. I can say, I think he graduates in a week, and he's planning on going to UVA and continuing on in his FBLA pursuits. I think we heard he was actually starting a chapter already.
Starting chapters before he got there.
Even before he got there. So is being great with that. And so, really, what we tried to do was look at different things in terms of communication. We had eight meetings. One of them got canceled because of the infamous snow that occurs as being part. A rough year for all of us. And we looked at, over the year, basically, different things. Each of our program managers had the opportunity to present information for us. They talked about what was going well, what was sometimes difficulty for them. In addition to that, we heard about the certifications they were doing and where things were moving forward. And this gave us, through the year, an opportunity to really see the variety of different programs. And we had the great opportunity of going to multiple schools and seeing the hands-on actual programs as being there. So we looked at ways we could improve communication. How do we get marketing? For several of you, we've talked about this before. It's how do we, all these students that get to the point of their junior, senior year going, "I didn't know that program even existed. How do I find out more about it?" And how we were going to do that. We also looked at delivery methods and making sure, how could we offer maybe more continuing ed or career and technical programs? In addition to the fact of, how do you maybe offer them without the transportation issues that sometimes bog things down? We also looked at CTE programs and the academic course sequencing, maybe to potentially develop with the support of the actual core program managers is, what would be recommendations of classes? So that could be built into the student learning plan, so that if a student's really interested in maybe architecture, how could you build in the classes with the house as being part, other courses that could go into it as being there? This year, kind of highlight, we had 29 members, which was very nice to be able to have. That included our student representative. In addition, some of the other things is Camp CTE. Last year, we had recommended going to the middle school counselors. Well, they did that. In addition, they had some additional people that included the career specialists, the high school career specialists. And so what we are really doing is recommending that that continues to go, because the more the students and the parents hear from advisors, what the program has and how it can connect to a career can really help them as being part. A recommendation from our committee is, is that a web-based presentation gets developed, that both parents, students, administrators, your business community can learn about what we are actually offering in Fairfax County Public Schools. Because some of these are, these programs are phenomenal, and they are not aware that it's actually happening. In March, both TED and Dr. Presidio came out. They talked about budget and how it would potentially affect our programs. In addition, we talked about the instructional focus and also how STEAM is being integrated in many of the programs. And really, Dr. Presidio even talked about it's challenging and more to get STEAM more involved in some of these things. We have a couple of positive things in our committee. Dan Woodley is serving on our state CTE advisory board. In addition to that, he is going to be the chair next year. So he provides a little bit of what the state view is, and sometimes it's nice to know that not only Fairfax is struggling with the same issues, but the same things across as being part. Both John Whitman and Mona Morrow actually participate in the Business and Community Advisory Councils, so that they get that perspective that really helps us all understand where to go as being part. One of the things that was discussed, and we would really, as a committee, like to continue on, is enforcing the implementation of the student learning plan. Especially since that's happening at middle school. I believe next year, we'll start some of that rollout. If you look at a lot of the business and industry, I know I'm healthcare, and they actually recommend that you hit students about 4th and 6th grade to start to get the career concept being formulated in their minds. So this is a great way to reinforce that. In addition to that, and maybe it's because my daughter is at Fairfax, and I know they might have been one of the pilot ones, with the additional component to that blackboard account is to have the career clusters and the career investigation, looking at colleges as that are being part. I would like to, the committee really felt strongly that, continue to roll that out, continue to move that throughout, because if parents and students are looking at a student learning plan, that they're going to be starting in 7th grade, looking now all the way through to 12th grade, maybe they'll have the opportunity to click and find some of those careers and maybe to see the connections that some of these programs can actually provide for them as being part. In addition, with the student learning plan, we really would like for you to help advocate with the Commonwealth School Board to allow CTE courses to count for potentially other graduation requirements. Could they be a math program? Could they be a science program? I know that, for example, there's anatomy and physiology, and that's an elective. But if you go to any higher ed program, that's a science program. And why can't that be? So really, to advocate, because I think that helps the students still gain their science program, but also explore into a career that they maybe, you know, wouldn't know as being part. And then, implementation of the cross-cultural or cross-curriculum integration of STEAM concepts. We had a wonderful opportunity to look at, why am I going blank? Irving Middle School. That actually is being recommended as a governor's excellence program. They're one of the finalists for that. It was phenomenal to, and I know that many of our team were wowed and literally said, "This is exactly what we envision as a business community, integrating both math and sciences into CTE programs," where students were figuring out how to build a house on a projected land. But also, in science, looking and analyzing the soil. And these were things that the science teachers were struggling to be able to incorporate. But students were able to learn them, and they were very willing to share their knowledge. And that really is being parts. Many of these courses aren't just electives. They're really the ones that help them understand and put purpose behind, "Why am I doing math? Or why do I have to learn to write?" Because it will actually move them forward. In addition, we spent about 40% of our time doing in subcommittee work as being part. And we had two subcommittees. One was Communication and Perception, which I think has been a hot topic for our committee, probably, I think, I know I've been about at least five years as being part. And we discussed many different avenues on there. So a couple of things that we want to recommend. One is Camp CTE Continues as being part, to develop the online. In addition, we want to recommend development of guidelines for elective nights, so that the CTE programs can get kind of a branding as to what is being part. Just general guidelines, not mandated, but how can we get this information out? Because each school does it differently, and we respect that. But to have some general guidelines, so that a student can learn about it in academy or even learn about a base CTE program, that could actually help them in terms of their career. And I talked about Irving Middle School, and I believe next, maybe it's this week or next week, they should find out in terms of if they were actually awarded that. In addition, really advocate for the greater understanding of CTE programs and what is the business in terms of creating partnerships. Really advocate CTE. My daughter has done four years. She's graduating senior. Started off her freshman year as a marketing major, and that is her career choice. And she struggled, and she's learned to write because of that, not because of the English class. This put value to behind it. So really advocate for that greater understanding. I know a lot of times, there's competing with AP programs. We have all the graduation credits on top of it. So these are some of the other concerns as a CTE is being there. The second group looked at course selection and delivery model. One of the group, that part of that group actually mapped CTE courses to career clusters, trying to look at some of the ways that courses could be. So if a student can't get in one of the electives, what could be an elective that could potentially foster that? What could enhance their career as being part? We also researched guidelines on hybrid programs and online programs. A lot of the businesses are using that, and to see this as a possibility. I know that you have several online programs, but could there be where you could learn the didactic information online and then have it where they come to a face-to-face opportunity? So maybe there's not as much commitment in terms of travel time as being part. So those are some of the things that we had really worked on. Our next year, we had several different things that we plan on doing. First off, we're going to be looking at specific topics that our members are really concerned about, student learning plan, some of the advising, some of the general things as being part. We'll still have our stub committee work, but we really want to look at that student learning plan and continue to see it being pushed forward. I think it kind of goes along with the portrait of a graduate as being part. It really can help those students identify what possibilities, or maybe even discovering when they went in and looked at it, "That's not the career I want to be." And I think many of you in this room understand, it's much easier to do it in middle and high school to say, "I'd have to touch that," or "I'd have to wear that," instead of them getting and spending the money they need in higher ed and discovering after midway that that's not really the program they want. We recommend piloting an online hybrid program, working it out to actually start with a pilot, like many of our businesses do. Try one class, try one thing, see if it's successful, find out where the weaknesses are as being part. As I talked about, advocating with the state for the CTE programs to count towards graduation requirements as being there. To continue the STEAM integration, the science, technology, engineering, arts, and math as being part. I guess there's also the STEAM H. If you look at some of the state stuff, is including the healthcare as another point. And really branding CTE marketing materials, so that people can see it and know about it and learn and discover those different things. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And I think we all, all of us who are reading time-challenged, much appreciate the infographic as well. So, thank you. So next, I'm going to go to FATE, because your work kind of ties in with CTEC and then FPAC following them.
All right, there we go. Well, thank you for having me tonight. FATE is always happy to be here. It's always a fun experience for us to come and talk to you guys about what we do. We very much enjoy it. So I want to start by giving you guys a brief overview of some of the things you always hear from us every year, and let you know where our current programs are. But I really want to focus tonight on some of the things that we're working on doing in the future and what we've done this year to do that. So the fifth home, which I know Tammy and hopefully some of you others were able to make out to the open house this past month, or yes, this past month now, is on the market for $879,000. The students did another fantastic job with it. It's a wonderful home, and we hope to sell it very, very soon, so we can go on to the next. Actually, the sixth is under construction right now as well. But one of the most important changes on the job site this year was the introduction of the Career Readiness Academy. This was something that Chad Macklin worked very hard on implementing, so we could establish a secondary source of students at the program and establish an opportunity for students that weren't finding the way they needed to learn in the classroom and find a way that they could do some of the things that were just spoke about from an applied learning perspective. Take their normal classes and start to apply some of the skills that they have to do in English, math, and sciences to the actual job site. And it's gone very, very well to date. And we're hoping that this program can serve as a repeatable model that we can use elsewhere in the county. I had the privilege of meeting with several principals this year as we worked through some of the issues that we were dealing with. And one of the things we heard is that a number of the programs that we have, as we've talked to you guys about in the past, are not accessible to the students due to one of two things, being time or transportation needs. And finding a location that works geographically for some of the students in the western side of the county. For example, where we used to have a lot of students from the McLean site would be very beneficial to some of the schools. So we're hoping that something like the Career Readiness Academy gives us a baseline to be able to open new programs elsewhere in the county, where we can then supplement that, the reverse of what we've done here, with students that elect to participate in the program from their base schools as well. So that's been going very well, and we hope to continue to report back to you guys about that. Student auto sales this year continue to increase their sales. We sold over $200,000 worth of cars this year, $140,000 of which went back to the schools for their use in equipment, trips, whatever they needed to do to continue their education. And it's been fantastic. So the three things that I want to focus on outside of that are things that are new to our program this year or are coming up and new to the program as well. The first was the Purple Express. I think we briefly touched on this last year. We got a proposal from students at Chantilly High School that wanted to open their own school store. But because of the financial situation that the schools are in, they didn't have the funding or resources to be able to do so. And so FATE was able to step in in our traditional fashion and be able to fund a program that would hopefully return dollars to FATE, but provide the opportunity for the students to learn those essential business practices. And so they've run a very successful business to date. They have already started returning funds to FATE, and they are going to probably, I hope in the next two to three years, be completely self-sufficient. And so again, this is a program that we think is repeatable very easily at other schools that students can do and run on their own, and they've been very successful doing so at Chantilly. Another thing that we wanted to focus on, which is a little bit different than what we've done in the past, is get away from the student-run enterprise model itself. Though those programs serve the capacity for us to do the things that we do, we wanted to look at other ways that we can help CTE programs around the county. So this year, we instituted what we call the FATE Program Improvement Grant, which is a non-student-run enterprise. It is with no expectations that we have a return for many of this. It is taking the funds that we're able to generate through our student enterprises and apply them to the support of other CTE programs in the county. So the first of that happened this year. Chad was instrumental in working with Fairfax County EMS and Fire to get an ambulance donated. And then FATE was able to fit that ambulance out with all the things that were necessary for the students to learn at the Falls Church EMS program. And so that has been, was recently very well-received as of last week, when they had it wet down out at, out at Falls Church High School. So that has been, or Falls Church Governors Academy, I'm sorry. That has been also very well-received. And so we plan to continue that every single year and set it up as an application grant. So once students or once teachers find out the funding sources or gaps that they have every year, they're able to apply to FATE for funds for CTE programs that they can then use to grow their base of students and their education base in the classroom with no expectation of returning FATE's to fund, or, sorry, funds to FATE. As we've continued to do every single year, we awarded many scholarships this year. And what was most impressive about this year compared to past years, to me, was that 90% of the funds that we were able to give out in scholarships this year came from business and industry. So we've gone from, five years ago, where almost exclusively all of our scholarships were given by FATE dollars, and now we have a lot of support and funding from the business and industry community, some of which comes from the board and some of which comes from outside of the board. But we were able to give almost $20,000 alone just from business and industry this year, and hopefully that will continue on going forward. And with that, we'll give our usual plug, and we appreciate everybody that comes to our annual dinner at Country Club of Fairfax. We know we had four of you last year, and we hope to have more this coming year. So anybody that can make it, it will be on October 21st this year, and we will send you plenty of harassing emails about it. So, thank you very much for your guys' time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. You always win the award for most succinct presentation, so thank you for that. Next, we have FPAC. And then, just to preempt them very slightly, I won't take your thunder away, Karen. But if there's anyone in the audience who's here to hear specifically about issues pertaining to the AAP program, I just want to assure you that the board has taken no action on any proposals. What we're hearing tonight is merely a recommendations, very creative sometimes, recommendations from, from our committees, which is what we've tasked them to do. So with that, Karen.
Thanks, Ryan. Jump right into the meat here. We're very happy to be presenting our fourth annual report to the board tonight. And as we get the show going here, I'd like to introduce our members that are present. I'm Karen Hogan, the chairperson. This is Dan Ammonoff. He's our vice chair. He's from Mason District. In the back, we have Dave Phillips. If you'll just stand real quick. Dave Phillips, an at-large member. Howard Pearlstein from Hunter Mill. Chris Malavattis from Providence. Charlie Hooky from Braddock. Matt Brooks from Springfield. Alan Griffith from Fairfax City. Did I miss anybody? And then we have our wonderful staff liaison that's been working with us really hard all year. A.J. Rewat is here tonight, and we thank him for coming this evening. And Ryan has been our liaison from the school board this year. Unlike some of the other councils, our members are appointed for rotating three-year terms and are approved as a slate by the school board. And this year, we have four members whose term is expiring, so we are hopeful that you will reappoint them for another three-year term in the near future. Our school board charge for this school year was to develop recommendations for effective and efficient use of facilities, consistent with the strategic facilities plan that we developed and brought to you last year, and you approved. To work with staff to continue to improve the CIP and to develop options for the Richmond Highway Corridor with a focus on community outreach. In response to that charge, we have presented a number of recommendations throughout the year on the effective and efficient use of facilities, and we present additional recommendations tonight. While the recommendations could have been more extensive and comprehensive, if we had had the opportunity to work more closely with staff, we have delivered on the first part of our charge, in our view. In the other two parts of the annual charge, we've been presented with some challenges that have had a negative impact on our ability to be productive in those areas. Our ability to work with staff to improve the CIP was significantly impaired this year because, unlike in prior years, staff did not release the CIP information prior to its release to you and to the public in December. And so as a result, FPAC had no input to the projects or the priorities that were contained in the CIP. On developing options for the Richmond Highway Corridor, staff asked us to wait until they had developed options and just asked us to sit and wait until that was done. And so we haven't got anything to report in that particular area. So what we'll do tonight is present the recommendations that we did come up with. Most of them were developed during our all-day retreat in February. And the first one has to do with revising our charter. In light of the difficulties we've had this year in fulfilling our school board charge, we reviewed our charter, and we proposed that it be updated to clarify the statement of FPAC's mission and responsibilities to the school board, to provide a clear link to the board and policy on advisory committees. We're governed by the overarching policy 1710 that all advisory committees are governed by, but we didn't feel like that was strongly represented in our charter. So we wanted to bring that out. And to provide logical document organization and structure. So we've provided that to you as attachment one to our report. During this year, turnover among FCPS facility staff resulted in new liaisons to FPAC and revisions to our operating procedures regarding FPAC and FCPS staff interactions. Staff has informed us that they cannot release information to FPAC prior to public release. This prevents us from access to the up-to-date information required to effectively conduct our work. Our second recommendation has to do with attendance area islands. In an effort to keep student cohorts and communities together in grades K through 12, to create measurable savings in transportation costs and emissions, to reduce student travel time, and to increase efficiency in space utilization, FPAC recommends that the staff report on seven opportunities to reduce the number of attendance area islands listed in the report. And if you're not familiar with the term island, it means that you have a contiguous area that's assigned to a school, and then over here, you have another little thing where those kids also go to that school. And it's not part of the contiguous boundary area. So we've listed those in the report as to which ones we think should be addressed. In boundary study areas, as part of our ongoing boundary adjustment program that we have previously recommended, five of the most significant... have previously recommended, five of the most significant areas in need of boundary studies not related to AAP are listed, including a comprehensive southeastern boundary review at all instructional levels to address the projected unbalanced utilization of available capacity and the effects of BRAC as recommended in our 2010-11 annual report. Capacity issues driven by the AAP centers. One cause of overcrowding at some of the elementary and middle schools is the presence of AAP centers. These centers draw students from surrounding schools, increase the utilization of the receiving facilities, and burden the transportation system. While FPAC does not make recommendations on educational programs themselves, we do examine the impact of programs on the FCPS facilities. By next year, 57% of our elementary schools will have AAP programs in them, and 10 of the 27 current centers are in overcrowded schools. There are many ways to deal with overcrowding that centers cause at some schools. In our report, we offer a recommendation on one approach to relieving such overcrowding, and that would be to pilot the use of local Level 4 programs versus overcrowding individual schools through the establishment of a center. The more important point is that the issue of overcrowding caused by centers needs to be addressed. As regards the new elementary school proposed in the CIP, FPAC recommends conducting a large boundary study in the northwestern area to determine and validate the need prior to moving forward with a new school. FCPS should also consider leasing a building and/or using an urban school design to address projected student growth in that area. FPAC strongly recommends that the renovation queue order be maintained until new ed specs and new evaluation criteria are determined and engineering reviews are conducted to create a new queue. We reemphasize that capacity enhancements to provide adequate facilities where needed should take priority over renovations. Maintenance and/or construction to ensure program-related educational specifications are met at all FCPS high schools should also be a priority. The use of 21st-century teaching and learning techniques should be implemented to improve the efficient use of space prior to adding space. Innovative ways to optimize the use of existing facilities, including SAC classrooms, auditoriums, cafeteria, and media centers should be encouraged to maximize use of FCPS facilities. We also recommend that a goal be established not to use trailers for core instruction at elementary schools. And finally, it is also recommended that FCPS work with the county to revise the FAR and zoning regulations to reflect the urbanization of Fairfax County. Now, that's quite a broad spectrum of recommendations, and they're not organized in any priority sequence. They are the ones that we have come across and developed during our deliberations. Recommendations that we previously submitted to you this year. In September, we put together a set of two recommendations that were submitted to our school board liaison and passed on to staff for action. The first one required, requested staff to develop procedures to be followed for privately-funded solar implementations at schools. There was a lot of questions from people who wanted to do some kind of solar thing at their school, and they didn't know how to go about getting permission and completing the project. So, we asked that the staff develop those recommendations. The latest information we have is that the procedures have been drafted but not yet posted. The second recommendation was that staff should report to the school board on the viability of a program that makes funds available through the construction process. The 2005 Energy Policy Act created the 179D tax credit for qualifying building retrofits and new construction projects placed in service between 2006 and 2013. While government entities do not pay taxes, under the 179D Special Rule for Government-owned Buildings, they may allocate the tax credit to tax-paying designers and receive savings in return. The Los Angeles Unified School District announced this past May 8th that it has secured over $200,000 in return for the allocation of the 179D tax deduction incentives from recent investments in energy-efficient buildings. We believe that at least that much is available to FCPS, and have been encouraging staff to examine this opportunity for about a year and a half, to no avail. In January, we presented and discussed our recommendations on the CIP, although we had extremely brief period to, between the time the CIP was released and the public, to the public and the time of the special work session that you so kindly held to let us present those to you. Providing our input after the development of the CIP rather than as part of the development process put us at odds with staff when we would much rather work with them to develop the CIP. Then, in April, we submitted written input to the board work session on CIP priorities. We appreciate the board's consideration of all of our recommendations, and we believe the deliberation on the prioritization of projects in the CIP will lead to an investment program that reflects the board's priorities. Both of these reports are provided as attachments. FPAC plans to meet monthly in order to apply the guidelines in the Strategic Facilities Plan to address the crisis in our school facilities and develop long-term plans for the efficient and effective use of these facilities in such areas as ensuring adequate capacity for the increasing number of students, maintenance, renovations, and funding sources, all of which comprise the CIP. Once again, to do this, we need staff support and for them to work with us to provide timely information. In the coming year, we will seek and incorporate community input and comment as appropriate, and we plan to resume our meetings with the County Planning Commission's Schools Committee. FPAC remains convinced that FCPS is in a crisis situation regarding its public school facilities. As stated in our strategic plan, school enrollments continue to increase, special services consume growing proportions of available space, and funding for additional capacity, renovations, and new construction is inadequate to meet the needs. FPAC had a busy year, and we recognize that there's a significant amount of information to be assimilated, that dedicated effort is required, and that there are many challenges to be met to develop recommendations on the efficient and effective long-term use of facilities resources to support the educational mission of FCPS. To that end, we request that the board consider the proposed revised FPAC charter, which is attached to the report. FPAC is ready, willing, and able to do much more for FCPS. The board carefully selected a group of professionals with extraordinary expertise and a variety of fields to tackle some of the most difficult issues in our school system. We are uniquely positioned to make the difficult recommendations as a citizen body with no political or employment risk. The lack of staff cooperation we have experienced this year has been disheartening and discouraging, and we ask your help in correcting those problems. We look forward to continuing our work with the school board, the FCPS staff, and the Fairfax community to address the crisis situation in our public school facilities. Thank you for the opportunity to present our report.
Thank you, Karen and Dan. And just as an addendum to that, the board will be considering their revised charter in the coming weeks, so just look out for that. Now, last but not least, we have ACE and Lois, if you want to join us up here.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen McBride, the current chair of the Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee, and we are pleased with the opportunity to discuss our report on adult and community education. We have a number of board committee members who are present, including Lois Passman from Mount Vernon. Also, Daniel Tilson is here from Braddock District. I believe John Lynn is here. Please stand up. Also, Patricia Frank from Sully, and Paige Slob from Drainsville. I'm not sure anyone else made it. So, thank you all for coming and supporting me tonight. We're here to report on our school board charge and on the state of adult and community ed. The program which the school board has assigned to our committee continues to be significant and important component of Fairfax County schools. The school board charge for us is two-part. Promote educational programs that provide opportunities for improved employment skills, respond to community and business needs, and enable lifelong learning for all ages. And secondly, identify best practices for fostering innovation, program collaboration, and enrollment growth while maintaining fiscal soundness in program administration. Just as a reminder for everyone here, the ACE Committee actually monitors three different areas. Community education, which was reorganized both in fiscal year 12, has had continued streamlining of staff in fiscal year 13 and 14. Adult ESOL, which is now part of a Virginia State Regional Grant with FCPS being the lead administrator for eight local jurisdictions in Northern Virginia, and they are in year two of a three-year grant. And then, the Adult High School Completion Program, which is undergoing a detailed review by Fairfax County schools. The ACE Committee is being updated on a regular basis regarding the process and potential changes. Enrollments for community ed and adult ESOL continue to grow. 45,000 enrollments in fiscal year 13, and we're already at 45,000 enrollments through April for fiscal year 14. For both community ed and adult ESOL combined, and you may recall that some classes were transferred to the Park Authority, Park and Rec, to eliminate duplication of classes and have ACE focused on workforce readiness, fiscal year 13 represents the first full year of this refocus. The adult high school completion continues to have a decline in enrollment and in graduations. Community ed, let's see, sorry. Well, I'm going to keep going here. I think Daniel. Oh, here we are, right there. Community ed continues to operate on a financially sound basis. Revenue is surpassing estimates, and they're meeting their objective of providing job and employment improvements. They are continuing its transition to a leaner organization. Classes are carefully evaluated for enrollments. They're focused on, as staff is focused on, meeting and exceeding the enrollment goals, and there are tight cost constraints in the budget process. ACE received focus from the Leadership Cohort Team regarding evaluation of marketing of ACE classes as compared to other adult learning options and certifications in the Northern Virginia region. And ACE is collaborating with K-12 programs in a number of areas such as CTE, and also for adult ESOL, they're collaborating with the, both Title I and also in the Foreign Language Program in the K-12. Adult ESOL continues in its second year of being administered as part of this regional partnership. This brings together these, this large area of over 2 million people, so includes, of course, Fairfax, Alexandria City, Arlington County, Falls Church City, Loudoun, Manassas City, Manassas Park, and Prince William County. Of course, adult ESOL is increasingly important as FCPS continues to increase in its diversity. We understand that 50% of our kindergarten students come from homes where English is a second language. If we can assist parents in their ability to acquire the key language skills of listening, reading, speaking, and writing, those families will be able to support their K-12 students as they move through the K-12 program towards graduation and on to post-secondary education and workforce training. Adult High School. The adult high school program is something the county can be extremely proud of. You might want to think of the adult high school as one of our larger high schools in terms of number of graduates each year, with a combination of the Fairfax County Adult High School, which many of us used to call Woodson Adult High School, GED, and the National External Diploma Program. Over 700 adult students received their diploma credential in 2013, and at any one time, over 1,000 students can be in class in a single month between 10 regular classroom locations plus the adult detention center, evening and daytime classes. The Adult High School Completion Program has been a focus area of the committee this year. Their leadership is in transition. The longstanding administrator, Jane Cruz, retired from the program. She's served 19 years as principal, 29 years on the staff. We're dedicating our report to her, you know, she's a model to all of us. An active search has been underway for replacement. There was an acting administrator, Gary Morris, who's an assistant principal for Mountain View. And then, just yesterday, the new administrator was announced, Bradley Rickel, who has been the administrator for Edison Academy. In addition, the GED test has been redesigned effective January 1, with an additional focus on career and college readiness. The Fairfax County Adult High School is, received a provisional accreditation this year. It was just shy of the 85% graduation rate. Instead, it was 84.78, so they were close, but there's no rounding for the state. 90% of the adult high school students at the Fairfax County Adult High School are ESOL students. FCPS should lobby the state of Virginia for additional time for these ESOL students to achieve graduation. There's been a decline in enrollment and graduations in the adult high school program in spite of the fact that there are more than 50,000 adults in Fairfax without a high school credential. In our much longer printed report, we have much more detailed information regarding our work, along with the additional information provided by staff. I'd now like to highlight the six recommendations, which are also discussed in more length in the report. The first one is adult ESOL. Provide an FCPS operating fund transfer for adult ESOL sufficient to meet matching and maintenance-of-effort requirements for federal and state grants. $400,000 has been transferred during the past several years. This current year, that has been reduced to $235,000. We're concerned that this reduction will be deemed a reduction that negatively affects the over $1 million in grants that this program receives from federal and state funds. We urge the school board to find $125,000 as a minimum needed to meet the $360,000 amount, so these grants are not jeopardized. Secondly, an ACE Advisory Committee should be included in organizational decisions and/or other stakeholders within the adult ed program. We believe that additional representation from the committee and major organizational reviews and decisions of ACE, including, of course, community ed, adult ESOL, and adult high school completion. The students in these programs do not have a PTSA. They rarely come to public hearings. They don't follow the board meetings. The committee feels a responsibility to be advocates for these students. During the past five years, there's been two major reorganizations of the ACE organization, including major reductions in staffing in fiscal year 2010 and 2012, the transfer of the Adult High School Completion Program from adult and community ed in the Department of Instructional Services to the Department of Special Services. In fiscal year 2012, many community ed classes were relocated to Parks and Recs, and then, currently, there's a major review of the Adult High School Program and Completion Program. I will say that staff has already responded to this recommendation. We've been kept regularly abreast of the review of the Adult High School Completion Program. In addition, a member of our committee was asked to and was able to participate in the panel for the selection of the new Adult High School Completion Program Administrator. The GED change. The test change for GED are quite significant, making it more challenging. The new GED test continues to provide opportunity to earn a high school credential other than a diploma, but it's now also focused on college and career readiness skills. We recommend that the Adult High School Completion Program evaluate the support needed for success with the redesigned GED test. with a redesigned GED test. We recommend that sufficient staffing and resources be provided based on the potentially increased preparation required for students to pass the redesigned test. The new test is automated rather than paper and pencil, and definitely additional laptops are needed. In addition, staff should carefully monitor the impact of a new test on pass rates and determine if curriculum needs to be redesigned. Marketing of ACE programs. ACE should expand its marketing focus to employers, along with potential students in the Fairfax County community. Programs to be marketed to the audience using not only catalogs but also social media, such as Google AdWords, Facebook, Twitter, Tumblr, et cetera. ACE should also reach out to specific business organizations to market ACE programs, such as the Chamber of Commerce. Community ed linkage with K-12 programs. We are very impressed with what the ACE organization is doing staff-wise in linking K-12, such as through CTE, science, health and medical sciences, trade and industrial education, automotive education. These all align with the adult and community ed's career and work readiness program. And last, but certainly not least, we would like to, them to continue their financial management improvements. The ACE staff is doing a great job managing their resources and administering the review and controls, assuring sufficient income and avoiding revenue shortfalls. Online economical courses are no longer offered. There's diligent monitoring, so that courses will proceed only if there are enough students to offset the cost. There's no longer a deficit, and the ACE programs are on a sound financial basis. We would like to compliment the staff on their hard work. The changes have not been easy. And then, we'd also like to just share with you some student voices, because we are so impressed with the students that you are supporting. "This program is the best thing to give me a chance to improve myself. It changes your life." And from another student. "I believe this is a great program to continue in the following years, because it helps people like me to pursue a different career path, especially when people are unemployed and looking for a second path in careers." Many of the students that are in these adult education programs are extremely vulnerable, and we appreciate the support the county has, the school system has opted to give them. So, thank you for your support and for our opportunity to review. We'd also like to thank all the support we've been given from staff. And I would like to personally thank Lois, Herb Purcell, and Daniel Tilson for helping the report. And we're open to questions.
Thank you Kathleen and Lois for that presentation, and thank you all. And I do want to say on behalf of my colleagues that two and a half hours is not nearly enough time to spend with all of you for all of the work you have put in. So, for that, accept our apologies, and do know that we are looking at how we receive feedback from our advisory committees, so be looking for potential changes this coming year on that. So, with that, my colleagues, we have seven members, seven minutes per member, and I will be keeping time. So, with that, we are going to start with, and once again, our hard stop is at 9:25. So, we have Mr. Moon followed by Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentations. I'm gonna start with the CTEAC. That you're, one of the recommendations that has to do with encouraging career summer specialists to participate in Camp CTE. I believe that this is not the first year you're recommending. That recommendation, at least this is the third time, you know, based on my recollection, has there been a improvement? Or you see, what do you see? Because...
There has been improvement, and there's been expansion. Originally, it was just the high school counselors, and now it's moving out to more and more, to the middle school counselors, the career specialists at the high school level, so that it is expanding. They've been able to do that as being part. It requires time, which sometimes staff don't have that opportunity, and that was one of the reasons why we're recommending an online.
Yeah, could I ask this? Even though it's been improving, the level of improvement or pace of improvement is not satisfactory to the committee? That is why you are recommending this?
Right, because there's still turnover that happens, and so you might have somebody trained, and they're no longer at the school as being part. So, it's still that not every high school counselor's been exposed to Camp CTE, and that was the reason why. We know that might not be a possible recommendation, but the idea of online, where at least the exposure of the different opportunities. Because many people may think, well, automotive, well, it's just standard, but it's not the automotive that many of us in this room went to school with. It is a different type. There are computers, there are, you know, the different levels of requirement. Chad has spent a lot of time, I know, in improving things. So, it, I think the idea of Camp CTE was to look at how do we really get the communication and get the information out about what these classes can do to many of the people who are working with our students and advising them as career choices.
Okay, thank you. I have one more to CTEAC. Your, one of the recommendations you have is developing a pilot program for an online course at the academy level. Do you think for CTEAC, a complete online program is a viable option?
It was actually an online hybrid program. So, the idea is, is that you can offer the didactic material online but still have that face-to-face? Because I don't know of any way that if you're talking healthcare, if you're talking dental assisting, you want somebody just to practice on a computer compared to even a simulation or a real-life person. I don't think anybody in this room wants their car repaired only by somebody who's done it on computer.
All right, thank you. I have, you know, just to comment to FATE, that I visited your Springfield house. I think there was a day before open house, so I had a preview of that house.
How do you feel about 879?
It was great, great. It was, it was a great one, except that with a school with a salary, it's quite difficult for the house. So, I'm hoping for a pay raise next time around. Additional, additional comment is this. I would love to be able to go to your dinner on October 21st. So, I quickly checked my calendar. There seems to be a, another event that night. Community-wide ESOL parent night seems to be on the same night. If we could, if we could make that adjustment, because I do not want to miss the other community meeting either.
Absolutely. I will certainly, I look at Chad, I don't know if I'm willing to say, we'll certainly look at it, but we've been trying. It's very difficult with the country, sometimes to find a date. We've struggled, but we'll certainly look at it. We understand, we'd like to have you guys there if possible.
All right, thank you. To FPAC, you have many good recommendations. Thank you very much. Really, I felt bad to hear about lack of cooperation from our staff. I'm hoping that, you know, that will not be the case in the future. I will hear from staff on, you know, why there is a perception, at least, you know, perceived the lack of cooperation from our staff. But when there is something like that, if the committee believes to happen, I guess you should work with the committee liaison to see whether there could be a, you know, sometimes it could be a just, you know, misunderstanding or miscommunication or, or difference in, in perspective of the level of the cooperation that may be required for the committee's work. So, but I am, I mean, I felt, I felt, I felt bad. I'm sorry that, you know, committee perceived there was a lack of cooperation from our staff. And that is a comment, and have a question about one of the recommendations, which is validate new elementary school. Was that the belief or conclusion by the committee that the new elementary school is possibly not needed in that area? Is that, is that why there's a recommendation?
The recommendation is there because we don't know.
You don't know.
Not that we disagree with the idea, but that we don't know. And we're suggesting that a broad look be taken at that whole area, because there's some schools that have very low percentage of utilization and some that are very high, and we think that we should look at that situation first and then determine whether we do need a new school and then where geographically it should best be located.
Okay, thank you. I have a question to ACE. I'm going quick, Mr. McAden. That, please clarify for me when you said that about the level of funding transfer to other ESOL program right now. It has been, it's been reduced from $400,000 to $235,000, and something about all the $125,000 to make it $360,000. Is that the belief of the committee that the $360,000 is a minimum required for the federal funding?
You're allowed to reduce the maintenance of effort number by 10, up to 10%.
Up to 10%.
It goes from 400 to 360. There's, we, I should tell you that there's, but was a large discussion, which we were not involved with, between adult ESOL and the finance office. And the finance office thinks everything is fine, but we really feel like this extra $125,000 would be, make sure that the maintenance of effort would be maintained without question.
Okay. Are you implying that we're not in compliance?
We are implying that you might not be in compliance. A relatively small sum, there would be no problem.
Okay, thank you. And the marketing of ACE programs, you picked out a couple of communities, ethnic community, Hispanic and Korean community.
Right. In the report, we, we met with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and with, did some, reaching out to the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce to try and do some additional promotion of the adult and community ed programs, both of whom were receptive to working with us. And it's something that we think the ACE staff should continue to work with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Appreciate it. Ms. Strauss followed by Ms. Evans.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much. These are fascinating reports, and we really do appreciate your work all year long to bring us some very thoughtful suggestions of how to make things better for our students. So, I really do appreciate it. First, CT, and I'm not gonna, I had a lot of the same questions that Mr. Moon had, so I won't repeat those, but I support his questions. For CTE, I, I think it is important that the state give us more flexibility in graduation requirements for some of our CTE courses. And I know Dr. Garza has talked about changes in high school diplomas giving us more wiggle room, because as the requirements increase and they become so rigid, the ability to take electives or to really follow what is meaningful in your life is getting harder and harder. So, I would hope that as we look at our legislative agenda, that we pick up on that, because I think, I think that's a very important point. I think a hybrid, online, in-school, I, I think that's, I think we need to look at that in a lot of different areas. We just have to be very efficient. We have to help our students with their own time constraints, so that when they're in school with us, with professional staff or professional equipment, particularly in CTE, that they are actually using that as the hands-on portion, if there's some other part they can do offline. That helps with efficiency, and we always know that the, the travel time is just always a problem.
Always a difficulty, especially with the academies.
I know, and I was there 20 years ago, and we invented the academies, and there was a big debate. Should we do academies? We knew we'd have a transportation, we said do it anyway. So, I sympathize with you on that, but I think some of your recommendations are absolutely right on. By the way, and Dr. Garza, this is one for you. Jerry Gordon, today at our lunch, shared a slide that showed the projected job growth in the county in the near future and in what areas. And I think that slide would be very useful for both CTE and adult ed, because they're very, they're very industry-specific, and those are really very, very good. So, thank you for FATE. You guys are always so creative. I just admire you so much. I've watched you for so...
We appreciate the support we have from everybody. We don't do it by ourselves.
You are so entrepreneurial. It is just absolutely wonderful. So, every time I go by the houses by Spring Hill, I go, yes. The Purple Express is interesting. I would like to, I mean, offline, I'd like to find out how we can expand more of that, because again, these are real-world experiences for kids, and it, plus it'd be a lot of fun. And then your entrepreneurial projects as well, some of those pieces. And, and I know, and also the challenge, also I saw the transition support TRS, I was getting those, the, the letters wrong, but we've had...
TRSC.
That's right. That, that's also participating in FATE, which is great. So, any, and, and as I know, you guys are always so incredibly creative to find more ways to be able to give more students the opportunity to work on, on your big projects as well. So, that's great. So, I will be asking for a little more information on some of these other pieces, because I can see that other, other schools would really enjoy that. For FPAC, I want to talk with you offline on some of the recommendations. I really appreciate, you guys do a nice job at, at looking hard at the numbers, and, and it just is, continues to be such a challenge. But when we start talking about shifty kids or programs, it's very sensitive. So, I would like to pick your brains a little bit more, because I know the McLean Pyramid, as we watch Tyson, the impact of Tyson's comes faster than I think what a lot of us thought, and I'm watching that with my eyes wide open. So, I would like to talk to you a little bit more about that. And adult ed, the one statistic was fascinating when you said that 90% of your high school completion is now ESOL.
90% of the students who are going to the adult high school, which we used, we used to be calling it Woodson Adult High School.
Right, right, exactly.
It's now Fairfax County Adult High School.
Right.
The students who have stronger language skills tend to choose the, either the National External Diploma Program or most of all, the GED program, because they often can do it more quickly.
Right, but the GED program is still offered, that was my next question, because it's always been trying to figure out what our market is. Who, who, because the, the market changes, who are we really serving? We need to make sure that, that as many adults as, as need get their high school diploma and also get some job training credentialing that they need. So, who is, who's the major provider of the GED piece, other than the jail?
Well, the jail is actually a relatively small place.
Right.
But they have excellent attendance.
Right.
The, so the GED itself, and I, they have much better statistics than I have right now with me, but just for going to graduations, it seems to be a much bigger cross-section of the county, but I'm not sure what the percentage is.
And is it, is it still adult ed that is, that is principally providing the services for the GED?
The adult ed, the transitional high schools are providing a number of kids to the adult, Fairfax Adult High School, i.e. what we would have called Woodson. So, that's, but they're choosing the adult high school because they're often have language skills, so the GED is not a good fit for them.
Okay.
So, this, the more typical person would be choosing the GED program, because it's quicker.
Right.
And they can finish more. The goal typically, if someone's coming back, is okay, I, I left high school typically under some sort of a cloud.
Right.
And so, what, I'd like to get in and get out as quickly as possible.
Right.
And the staff is able to evaluate their strengths and then help them with whatever they need to do to finish. But I haven't really answered your question as far as the demographics of that group.
Right, okay. One last question. You had also said that 50,000 adults in the county lack a high school diploma.
That's what we've been informed.
And is this, does this count the ESOL or not?
It counts everyone, yes.
It counts everyone. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Strauss.
Overlap of CTE and job, and, and credentialing programs through CTE. Is that possible with adult ed?
That's an excellent question.
That's okay. You can, you can answer later, but that was the other crossover. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. Next, we have Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Hines.
First of all, I just want to thank you all for excellent reports and, as well as for all of your work this year. You can see how much went into, to this process and, and into your work, so thank you. I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions, and I know our time's limited, so I'll try to keep it brief. First of all, for FATE, thank you so much for the ambulance coming to Falls Church That was, that was a wonderful addition, and I was just so sorry I, I wasn't able to make that celebration, because I, I know that was a, a very big deal. So, thank you for that. My one question was, when you look at, into other areas to build houses, I would think, and I'm guessing, but I'm, I'm wondering if you can tell me, are you very limited by where you can go? I'm thinking in my part of the world where, you know, land is so limited. Are, are you basically limited to certain parts of Fairfax County?
Yeah, I mean, the, the program in the past has been solely based on donated land to the school system.
I see.
And so, we're looking at other land sources as well, but we continue, you know, we're hoping to continue the, the work we've had with you guys to, to be able to support that. But in the same effort, we're trying to find some ways to support other county initiatives while doing so, which will open up other land sources for us. And so, those are some of the things we're working on to establish a second site. But really, the, the establishment of a second site grew out of, one, the Career Readiness Academy and the ability to be able to place one of those and start a program with students. And two, the need geographically that we just can't meet with the time constraints, even if they have the ability to get there, the western half of the county right now in Springfield.
Right.
Where all of the schools that were attending... in Springfield, where all of the schools that were attending in McLean before, we don't have any of those represented any longer in Springfield. And so we've found it's a geographical issue, not just a time issue.
Right. And I would think, you know, coming from the Mason District would be hard to get to as well. So, you know, in connection with that, I'll go to CTAC. You know, one of my questions, I'm wondering, and if you don't have the answer, I'll follow up with staff on this, was how many of the students are approximately the percentage are from the host school as opposed to coming in? Do we have a sense of that? I'm just wondering how much of a barrier the transportation and the time is.
I don't have those statistics. I'd imagine they do.
I will follow up with staff on that as well. Because, you know, I was over at, talking to some students at a high school today, and one of the students was saying, I really wanted to take an academy class, but I just couldn't work it out with my IB. And I was wondering if IB presented particular challenges because of the requirements of the IB diploma. So I guess one of the things I do wonder, and I would like to follow up on this, is how many students have to take two courses, you know, take two sessions in order to be transported and come back? And I suspect it's fairly significant, at least for those not at the host school. So I'd just say, on the online course, I'm delighted to see that proposal. I think that's a great proposal that would extend your reach to other schools, so time and transportation won't be a problem. So thanks for bringing that to us. Going to ACE, thank you. Thank you for your work as chair, Kathleen. You mentioned the reduction in enrollment, even-
The actual schedule of how much the graduation, oh, how much, yeah, how much the graduation has declined. It's Exhibit Six in the actual report, and I'll just read the totals. This is from 2010, nine twenty-seven, 2011, eight seventy-seven, 2012, seven sixty-eight, 2013, seven oh-two. So it's gone down by two hundred and four years.
And the reason you're speculating?
You know, I got this, I think with the change in leadership, there's a lot of questions that they're looking at. I'm not sure why it's declined.
Okay.
And then I'm not sure of all the reasons for, so this is the actual graduation. So this is a combination of GED, adult high school-
Okay.
-from the National External Diploma and the Woodson, or now Fairfax Adult High School. So I'm not sure of all the reasons why. And actually, it's an area for focus for our committee to work on for this coming year.
I'm glad to hear that, because that certainly would be worth pursuing, you know, what, because we know that there are plenty of people who need these services, so if there's some barrier that we're not aware of, I'm glad you're pursuing that. So thank you. And I was very interested to read the report about the depth and breadth of the program. So it's always good to see, and your new initiatives too, the TJ Prep at Homes and some of the other things. So congratulations on expanding, expanding your reach. Going on to FPAC, this is very thorough, and I appreciate that you're looking at so many different issues. The FAR issue, I'm glad to see that recommendation in there. Has anyone approached the county about this? Do we have any sense of whether that would be well received or not?
You know, I've had some off and on conversations with Tim Sargent, the chair of the schools' subcommittee of the planning commission. And, you know, he's more than willing to consider, you know, he wants us to bring him a plan, essentially, so that we can move forward with them on that.
That's great, because as you know, we've run into that time and time again in our part of the world.
Exactly. So we want to try and get ahead of the game, such that, you know, if a capacity enhancement needs to occur at a certain school that doesn't have the FAR-
Right.
-we can look at that.
Well, good. I'm very glad to see that. And the educational equity, thank you so much for bringing that issue to us. And as far as being sure that our high schools in particular have the science labs that they need, you know I'm right there with you on that. And the only question I had for that, other than how to get that done, is if you figure it out, you gave us a priority list, you know, where on the priority list would you put that, or did you even consider, you know, where that would be in that one, two, three?
We didn't prioritize the recommendations, but I think one area that we could probably be helpful in is looking at how that, how the CIP dollars could be allocated and help with some prioritization of doing renovations, doing the equity issues, doing the capacity enhancements where they're needed, doing boundary studies where they should be done, and integrating all of that kind of activity.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you focusing on that, because that certainly is an important issue.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Evans. It's your time.
All right.
We'll put you down for a go-back.
All right. I only had two more, but that's all right.
Okay. Ms. Hines.
Okay. So I'll be speed-talking, I guess. Well, I did, for ACE, thank you very much. My questions have been asked and answered for you guys, but I just wanted to be sure to thank you for your work and to thank staff. There have been major changes, and I know that that's difficult, so we appreciate that. Going to FPAC, I, you know, you, all of our advisory committees are an incredible resource for us, and you guys absolutely are. I mean, we have so much expert advice from you, and I do, I know we all want to make sure that we're using the investment wisely. So I do hear that there have been some maybe misunderstandings, miscommunications, and we will address that, because we do want to make sure that you guys are as effective as we know you can be and as helpful to us. On the AAP centers, you know, we did have just a little bit of email about that.
So did we.
I know. And I think it's understandable, you know, you put those three letters together in a sentence, you're going to get emails, right? But I think, you know, I'm glad that you sort of bit that off, because we do have to talk about programming when we talk about facilities. And any, you know, AAP centers are one part of our programming that does create some anomalies, you know, where you have a crowded school right near a less crowded school, and there's a choice component in there that maybe we could work with, you know, without diminishing the instructional quality. And I think we can. And I, you know, the suggestion that we might be closing centers is very far from what we would do, but I, at least anytime soon. But I think of the example in Vienna from the last couple of years, where we took a crowded center in Louise Archer, and actually, we didn't close it, but we decentralized it. We opened another center in Vienna, so that then, you know, we're able to serve the population. So maybe that makes more sense in those places where we have those anomalies. So I, but I really appreciate you being willing to tackle that, because we have to be willing to talk about that. And I think the advanced academic parent community would probably like to be involved in those conversations, and we'll have to make sure that they are. Looking forward, I just wanted to ask you for your thoughts about, I know you talked a little bit this time about sustainability issues with the solar, and that's wonderful. It's something we don't talk about enough. And then also, early ed, you know, we have such a facilities problem with early ed. Did you guys think about that, or do you think about it going forward as part of your work?
I think there's going to be a tremendous impact on facilities if we move forward with early childhood education. Not having numbers regarding that, it's difficult to say what kind of impact that might be, but we'd be certainly happy to take a look at the situation and provide you with some feedback.
Okay. Thank you. That would probably be helpful, because it's the wall that we run into every time we talk about early ed, unfortunately. Okay. Thanks so much. CTE, thank you guys very much. In some ways, the best stuff we do. You know, I really, I think it's great. And every year, we hear sort of the same thing, how do we grow it? How do we make sure people know more about it? And I find myself wondering, have you guys thought about, or would you think about, you know, what is sort of the pie in the sky goal? You know, what is our pie in the sky hope that, you know, every student has available in a reasonable way, you know, opportunities? I mean, I hear you guys talking about a whole sort of a buffet of ways to get there, you know, more brick and mortar opportunities, more integrations, the partnerships, you know, using online, mixing it with hands-on. Have you thought about, you know, what sort of, what's our goal? What do we want for our kids?
I think the goal is for the student to have the opportunity, to be exposed to the opportunity. They can make the choice of, is it AP? Is it IB? Is it CTE? Where are they going as being part? I think for years, students are discovering it too late, and they can't build it into their plans. And that's where I think the student learning plan becomes a real opportunity to expose not only the student, but the parents. And I think sometimes parents may be the actual negative influence sometimes, especially if somebody says, well, I really want to do this. And we have a lot of parents, I mean, I have, I had in my own family, my husband was like, she's doing what? And it wasn't unless I sat there and said, you've got to let them try a career, and it's probably from my own experience. But I know there are many, in fact, last year, as courses were being selected, I had a very good friend whose daughter wanted to go Virginia Tech and do engineering, and I said, you know that there's an academy program? No, I didn't know. And fortunately, it was early enough that she actually went, and she is going to Virginia Tech and continuing on. So I think it's the exposure and the earlier exposure that's needed.
And that's a great story, because you talked some about rebranding, and I think there's a sense that career in tech ed means you're not going to college, when in fact, so many of these avenues for kids are great basis for a college career, you know. So I look forward to your advice on how do we rebrand, you know, in this parent community. FATE, I just wanted to, again, wow, thank you guys so much. My question for you guys is just, you guys work so hard and you do so much, are you, is it, I just don't know, is it completely volunteer-driven? I mean, I know our staff helps-
Twenty percent volunteer, eighty percent Chad Macklin. Maybe more like ninety-nine-one, but it's, yeah, our board is completely volunteer, but Chad is certainly our heartbeat, so it makes it a lot easier to do our jobs, so.
Okay. And it feels sustainable?
I feel, I feel fearful at sometimes, but not that the, not that we can't handle it. So I, I mean, I think we, I think we need to find ways to integrate ourselves more with the activities that are going on at the school board level and the other levels. So I, we're certainly open to that, and certainly one of my objectives is to be able to do that once I step down as president, is try to do some things on those lines, because this year, I had the first opportunity with Chad, as I mentioned earlier, to go sit with some of the principals this year. And the insight that I got from just those several meetings was better than anything I've heard sitting at board meetings for the last seven, eight years. And so I think the integration at the school level and at the board level, I think, will certainly be important for us to try to do that. So we're certainly working on that. We need to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. McLaughlin.
And the speed talking continues. First of all, I just do want to say that these were really fantastic presentations, and I truly enjoyed the wealth of information that each one of your groups have brought to us tonight. It is extremely beneficial. You are unpaid staff, as far as I'm concerned, that really helped bring additional information, because even Fairfax County's official staff under Dr. Garza's administration, they don't have enough time, enough manpower. And so you represent the very best in our county, who help create an amazing school system. So I really do want to echo what my colleagues have said. Your time is very valuable, and it's meaningful to all of us. So some thoughts and some questions. First of all, first CTAC, I want to thank, you know, my appointee, Jim McCormick, one of the most passionate of my appointees and all of my school board committees, just thank you for the dedication you bring to it. And I really enjoy our twice, twice-a-year meetings on top of it, and really keeping me abreast of what you're doing. In terms of how do we grow the CTE courses, and I will share a couple of things that Jim and I talked about today. When we have a director of student services who refers to CTE, to a student population in open houses, those are the VoC Ed, Home Ed type classes, it tells me we need some more Camp CTE training. And, you know, it's just going to take some time, but that's going to be our point one, is if we can get our directors of student services and our guidance counselors to really appreciate the breadth of what these courses are, that will help us with that. I also think that, having watched the presentation on Camp CTE, I was, I was absolutely mesmerized as a parent about what that is. And so I would love to see us grow the awareness. I also would like for CTE to think about the fact that if we were to survey our guidance counselors, if we haven't already done it, as well as create a focus group of students and/or guidance counselors, to say, what are the barriers to taking advantage of CTE courses? Because I think sometimes it's travel time, sometimes it is trying to fit in all of the state requirements. But I think in order to help our school system really be able to identify solutions, you have to understand where the hurdles are first. And so I think we're still trying to get there, and that's one way, I think, going directly to the source, right into our schools, and ask our guidance counselors and students, what are some of the impediments? For my own three sons, I can tell you it's just trying to squeeze in all the requirements. I was so excited by your recommendations, including lobbying the Virginia Board of Education. My son actually looked at the anatomy class for his senior year, and I absolutely think that is a great example of where that should be able to fulfill a science requirement, and then imagine making science more meaningful for our students. I also want to give a shout-out to Chantelli. I understand their open house and the way they present the CTE courses is outstanding. And if we could use that as a model to help our very busy schools and staff, here's a great way of how we package and present it to our families. That's a way of making those open houses more meaningful and be more effective in the outreach. And so I just, those were kind of the immediate things that kind of came to mind, and I'm really a fan of a web-based presentation. Again, so we, you know, guidance counselors can direct their families to, you know, parents to be looking at this with their students, because time is so challenging in this county, and that would be a great way to reach more people. In terms of FPAC, again, appreciated meeting with my appointee, Charles Hooky, and also Karen Hogan today. You did a beautiful job in making your recommendations and trying to make us aware of some of the challenges that we've had in getting information to you as a system. And I'm confident that with Dr. Garza and the board, we can help work toward whatever those obstacles are, because I do believe, in listening to my colleagues, that the work you do is, again, invaluable to us. And in channeling my colleague, Pat Hines, I just want to say that with respect to the AAP centers, I think that it's not about closing a center and necessarily now you're going to just have local Level Four in your schools, but it is about where we locate those centers. And sometimes a center will become overcrowded, and then we have to look at maybe, is there another elementary school that's proximate that can absorb and better provide the space? And so I thought Ms. Hines really tapped into something that we talked about earlier today, and I think that might help our AAP community also recognize, it's about making sure that we place students in a building that can accommodate them. And I think that we do have to look at how our programmatic needs will change over time. I also think that it's very compelling when you look at the solar implementation, you know, I watched my colleague, Ms. Reed's eyes get real big, and she may talk to it too, but, you know, that's exciting. That's, you bringing that information to us as a system and seeing how we can get or utilize that is so important. And then in terms of FATE, as you've heard, we just love the work you do with our students, and it's very exciting and very much appreciated. So my questions were answered by my colleagues, but I do want to express my appreciation. And for ACE, I think it was incredibly compelling when you talk about the growth of the ESOL population in Fairfax County, and when you look at student growth, we need to think about as a system and as a county, well then, how are we also increasing our funding for our adult population that, especially the parents of the children who are coming into our schools? And so I thought that was a very important point that you highlighted in your report. And I think that it's going to continue to be a part of Fairfax County's changing face. So I'm being signaled to wrap it up. I look forward to our staff in the school system also reporting on the recommendations you've brought to all of us. And again, please email me anytime, and I'll be sure to do the same, but thank you for your hard work. But thank you for your hard work.
Of Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you all for your hard work. I know how much time you spend and your passion behind this. So we really thank you all for coming here tonight to report to us. And also for, as I said, your many hours you've spent during the year to us. Speaking briefly on each of you, mostly comments rather than questions, because many of my questions have been answered. Fate, yes, I did go and see the house, as I always have. And I think Chad, when he was giving his beginning comments to the young people who were receiving scholarships, he said, "Five thousand feet of authentic assessment." Is that great? I mean, that is quite the comment, because that's exactly what it is. It's the ultimate experience of hands-on learning. And it's a beautiful job. I am touched every year by how, well, and even how it's grown from the first year, how we also bring it in other branches of the school system. We had photographers there from some of the CTE classes. We had the Culinary Academy presenting and serving. So it's all about, that event is all about looking at the programs that we offer, you know, the different career-ready programs we offer our students. So I thank you both for that. I do have a personal story, if you will, given from one of my high schools in my district, about the TRSC program. And rather than revealing a lot, just to say that there were some students from a particular high school in my area who were completely not doing well within the system. And they came out to that site through the TRSC program and are highly successful right now, according to their. So that is but three young people who have, this year, whose lives have been completely turned around as a result of that program at that site. So, you know, we are, you know, doing small things sometimes, but in small numbers, but they are big things to those children. So I am grateful for all the volunteers who have helped and been able to make that possible, as well as our staff. FPAC, I too would like to thank you for your hard work, because I know how dedicated and committed you are. I would, as some of my colleagues already have, I would like to follow up with you offline and on some other recommendations. Again, as I said about CTE, I particularly liked your recommendations on developing a pilot program. I think that's extremely important. And though all I do think it's much improved, I still do think we need to work very hard on that communications piece about making people understand the terrific programs that we have. And I, you know, it's important. So Camp CTE, more information on the parents. And, you know, as, you know, our staff, we need to help with that, help that messaging. Because I still think it's not where it needs to be. And we've been working, at least since I've been on the board the past three years on that. And I think it has been much improved. Because I do have kids in the school system, I'm hearing the messaging that they're receiving, but it's still not quite where it needs to be. So thank you for recognizing that. And I look forward to us helping improve in that area. And for the Adult ACE Program, I am hopeful that after we have had, now we've completed the streamlining, we can focus strategically on our priorities and help to continue to improve this program. Because it's apparent, I think, from the numbers, that, you know, some of these changes have impacted us. But it is nonetheless a very important program. Thank you so much for continuing your work. And it is particularly, as many of my colleagues have touched upon, some of our emerging populations and their needs and how this can be one of the sources for them to be able to, you know, help their children by helping them grow in their own education and understanding of, you know, how they want to improve themselves. So thank you so much, all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofax. Next, we have Mrs. Schultz, followed by Mrs. Reed.
So, thank you all. I have more questions than comments. And if possible, I'd like to start with CTE. On the approaching Richmond and advocating for dual credit or applied credit, do you have, did you put together a specific list of courses and adjunct curriculum out of the academic side that would be, that would have any parity? Have you talked to staff about that and tried to draw parallels on where courses within the CTE would fulfill credits on the academic side of the curriculum?
We have not, but that could be something that the committee could focus on for next year as being part. There are probably several of them, if you, the staff could probably even look at them. And knowing where they're at, I mean, anatomy and physiology was one example that most of us could look at. I know some of the engineering classes that are there could be applied for either math or sciences, depending upon where the focus is. So there are many different things that are potentially out there.
I would imagine that this would be a good thing to put in a charge, because I almost wouldn't want this to go another year. But I do see that, and this is one of those things that keeps coming up, but I don't actually see anything happening with it. And I'd like that to end. We seem to get a little, in my opinion, a little scatterbrained as a board in our approach of some of our legislative advocacies. But this is critical. You know, this is, this would save money, this would do all kinds of things. This would help kids, you know, get dual credit. So, you know, it's something, I don't know if we have next steps, but this is something that, you know, I've heard before. And I'd like to move us forward to a resolution. So that would help, you know, if there's, you know, ideas. I mean, I don't know, I don't know that you all possess all the knowledge, but somehow between what you know and what staff knows, that's definitely something. With regard to the STEM or STEAM approach, were there specific recommendations that you had on either best practices that you saw that you could cross over in some of those areas where there would be like cross-curricular implementations? Or did you think that there were implementations in certain schools that could be replicated? Because the whole duplicable model is how we get to a best practice. And we don't get to the, you know, kind of pockets of excellence or places where we do something great, and then nobody else really knows about it.
I think several of our program managers know some of that. But I would say, look at Irving Middle School as a prime example of how CTE teachers were able to partner with staff that were willing, instructors that were willing to look at how could they jointly identify an objective, a learning goal that was on both sides.
Well, I thank you for picking one of my schools. Well, I was like, I didn't pay her to do that. Irving Middle School seems to be, you know, a kind of a hotbed for a lot of best practices. So I thank you for pointing that out. And that's something that I definitely would like to focus on is, and that kind of goes along with the portrait of graduate of creating and duplicating models of excellence. For FPAC, if we could go specifically to your set of recommendations under F on the funding priorities and space utilization, I have a question about number two. Capacity enhancements should have a priority over renovations. That's a broad statement. And I'm wondering if there's some information that's behind that. Because I'm starting to get nervous when I hear capacity enhancement over anything else. Because what I, what that, what I hear is, we're housing kids in bigger and bigger and bigger schools instead of, you know, wise use of facilities and what's necessarily wrong with some smaller schools? And that there are a loss of return of investment on parental involvement and student achievement and everything at a certain point. And so are you talking just, you know, just keep adding on like Legos to schools and making more and more mega schools? Or what is the, what's the thought process behind this, if you could elaborate?
Certainly, first of all, the school board sets a school size. And so we've not taken on that particular issue to say the school should be bigger, bigger, bigger. But what we are saying with that particular recommendation is that we have limited funds in the CIP. And if you're going to use your funds the best way you can, rather than renovate a school that has enough room for all the children that are already there, you may very well need to add some capacity elsewhere in the system for children who are in overcrowded classrooms. And we think that's a higher priority.
But would that not be then, so for example, if you pick a school that has, you know, 133% enrollment projected? What you're talking about, though, is adding more capacity to that school, so effectively making that school bigger down the road, are you not, or no?
Well, let me step back a minute. In December, January, we gave you a prioritized list of how things should be done. And it said, "First, look at using all your space that you currently have. Look at some boundary changes. Do the other things that you can do before you even start thinking about adding capacity or building new schools." So there's sort of a sequence in which you consider those things. The second one is, if you have a school at 133 capacity, you might look at, why is it that way? Is there a program driving that? Is there some other issue driving that? And I don't want to take all your time with the answer, but I want to make sure you get it.
Well, and then the, maybe with my remaining minute, because I have, as Ms. Evans, at least three more questions. Scheduling four separate committee reports on one night and narrowing it down to seven minutes is not an effective use of our time. So, and the last comment would still be for FPAC is, I was surprised not to see a recommendation for a plan to eliminate or minimize and mitigate the use of trailers. You know, we've gone to, you know, trailering, you know, at a thousand student, a thousand trailers in the division. I mean, the, I saw, you know, innovative use in your fifth recommendation, innovative use. But there isn't, that kind of didn't go to the next place of maximizing the use. Not, I mean, innovation, I don't know what that means. I know what maximize and efficient use is. So I don't know how five ties into G. But I would have liked to have seen, you know, a thought process of five incorporating the concept of G in a recommendation that we try to use five to get rid of G.
We agree with you on the trailer issue, 100%.
I've added you for go-backs. Next, we have Ms. Reed, followed by Mr. Velkoff.
Thank you. Thank you all for your presentations. I won't repeat what my colleagues have said. I was trying to step back and look for themes. And it seemed to me that three out of the four of you talked about workforce readiness, improved employment skills, and responding to community and business needs, which in fact was the ACE charge for this year. So there's clearly a lot of overlap. And I'm hopeful that as time goes on, we can figure out how to fine-tune and work more closely together. And one question I had for ACE in that regard is, I was just looking at the course offerings for ACE. Do we have many students that elect to take those classes outside of the school day? But do you know, I mean, or are they mostly adults who take those?
Well, actually, ACE is restricted to adults.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
It is? Why? Is there a legal reason why?
We don't restrict the classes to adults. Students can take adult, take adult classes. They just have to get, you know, go through the public channel, get counseling. The counselor is there, you have to do a microphone, okay? I'm sorry. We don't restrict them to adults, but they do have to go through our educational counselor and get permission if they're under 18, you know, to take our adult courses. But they're not restricted. We do have students who take it, take our classes, especially our computer classes, you know, that offer certifications. But it's not a large number at this point.
Okay, so that might be an opportunity then. We might, as you do your communication enhancements, maybe think about how we might reach out to students. Because there's so many, so many hours in the school day. And I appreciate some of your suggestions to address changes in Richmond, which personally, I think, is probably a long shot, but we should try, right? I mean, they can't even pass a budget, right? So, okay, sorry, I had to say that. Okay, also, I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the practical skills that our kids can get. And again, looking online, certification and licensures, the dual enrollment. I wonder, do we do much work in the apprentice area?
There is some. In fact, one of our members is actually from the STEEL apprenticeship. So there are some as being part, there are certifications as being there. I believe the automotive starts the, no, he's shaking his head, as being part. I do know that there are, many of these can go into an apprenticeship. But I believe apprenticeships, some of them require the, to be an adult as being part. So they have to be 18, which many students are not. And I hopefully, I may or may not, I guess you Chad come up and he's...
The apprentice programs that we're connected with are HVAC and our electrical programs, which were affiliated with the locals apprentices programs there as well. So our students in HVAC or electrical are apprenticing out at the Level Three or Four level, depending on their skill set, in the secondary.
Thank you. I wonder if you have any suggestions for how we might strengthen our ties to the business community and others who might be looking for certain types of skills? And you kind of alluded to that a little bit, that you're working with them. But just today at this Chamber of Commerce, the foundation event, I was talking to some business members, and they were saying, "Gosh, you know, we just can't fill these vacancies." We just, especially in the healthcare field, they just can't find enough people. So I guess, to me, it seems like a bit of a supply and demand. And to what extent are we really trying to focus in on certain areas here locally where we can identify kids, particularly those who want to go right into a job, who aren't interested in college? Do you feel that there are opportunities where we could do more? And this is for any of the three of you, and then I'll get to you all in a minute.
ACE definitely does healthcare training. I mean, Cheryl can probably go over the program more in more detail than me. But they're very focused on placement of students and being workforce-ready. And a number of people in the ACE program are not going through college. They're going through ACE for a certification, including healthcare.
And I think that, I know with the CTE programs, they're building in the credentials that the workforce is looking for. Again, it's how do we market it out? The same is marketing it to our parents. If we're not getting that information, we're clearly not getting it to our businesses also. So I think really a campaign of what's going out there. And I do know that the healthcare programs are in conjunction with ACE. So especially the LPM program, their first year of their LPM program is their senior year. And then they go to ACE for their second year.
I know Dr. Garza has talked a lot about having multiple pathways to graduation. And I think as we go through our strategic planning exercise, perhaps we can articulate several pathways and further accentuate the opportunities that we have for our kids. So that's all very exciting. And it's clear that we're doing a lot. And like you said, it sounds like one of the biggest barriers right now is that people aren't aware of it, right?
I fully believe that. I mean, even in, as healthcare, as I am a healthcare provider, people were totally unaware of what a Fairfax County actually has as part of a training program. And that these could be potential employees. They were totally blindsided, that they were right in their backyard.
And last, one minute, okay, just quickly. FPAC, I wondered, I guess this is really a question for Dr. Garza, the next steps for the AAP discussion. I appreciate FPAC bringing forward the, raising the issue and offering one potential suggestion. But unfortunately, it's been taken out of context, and we've got a lot of parents who are very upset. And so I guess my question is, and last week, we heard, by the way, from our AAP committee, and they were looking strictly at the academic-related issues. So my question for Dr. Garza is, do we have a sense, or can we tell the community, is this something that we're going to be looking at? And, you know, no action to be taken now, but, you know, this is something that we're going to be studying? Or, you know, how do you, how do you want to respond to that? Very briefly, you know that we have been, is this working? We have been...
We have been looking at our AAP centers. In fact, we've been meeting with some specific board members where we have some growth and capacity challenges. We're developing a report to be brought to you all as a result of that. If you remember back when the last report on AAP was done, there were a number, there was a schedule and a timeline for looking at all of our AAP centers. Some board members expressed concern that we need to accelerate a few more because of some challenges. They've gone back and looked at that. So we will be bringing that report to you all soon. With that being said, certainly appreciate the work of FPAC, and we do have to look outside the box, and we have to be very strategic. I think when we make decisions around programming, we have to have the long view in mind. And I know that's been a challenge in some cases. And, you know, and we recognize there have been some siloed decision-making in the past that has hurt us here, but we will not make changes overnight. So if there are any changes made, I mean, I know I speak for this entire board, we will not blindside parents. There's been no formal recommendation to this board about closing any AAP centers. There's no intention to do that in, you know, in any timeline that I'm aware of at this point. But at some point in the near future, should we have to do that, the parent community would be absolutely engaged. In fact, I think we have a pattern of doing that. I hope we do, but, so there will be no surprises on that. So parents can rest assured that it's not going to, they don't need to worry about that right now.
Lois has a quick response to you.
Response to Ms. Reed. In the, oh, thank you. In the report, on page 12, is a section called Health and Medical, and that then directs you to a career ladder on page 14. So, and one of the paragraphs says, increasing the number of opportunities for students to advance on the clinical ladder to two- and four-year degree programs, and then refers you to page 14. So it's quite the extensive program that ACE offers in the health and medical field.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Mr. Velkoff, followed by Mr. Stork.
So first of all, I want to thank all of you and all the members of your committees for volunteering your time in the service of our great school system, so thank you. In the interest of time, I'm going to limit my remarks to CTEC and FPAC. And in each case, Dr. Garza, I'm going to pose a question for you to mull over, not necessarily for tonight, but some big, what I intend to be big-picture questions. So first, CTEC. We talk a lot about, how do we meet students where they are? How do we engage them? How do we make school relevant? And I think every time I address this question, I think about this question, it comes back to the work that we do in career and technical education. And I have a vision that 10 years from now, and I will not be on the board 10 years from now, that we're all going to look back and see that this bifurcation between career and technical education and traditional college prep that we've all grown up with, that that's going to have vanished, okay? And so in that vein, Dr. Garza, the question I'll pose for you to think about, really, is, help us help you to accelerate that process and make that happen, okay? Next to FPAC, first of all, I'm going to echo the request that Ms. Hines made, which is, please look at the issue about facilities and pre-kindergarten. That's a huge thing, so I fully support her request to add that into the work, the information that you can help us understand. I'm going to say, I am very, very grateful that, as you always have, you tell it like it is. And please keep doing that. Please never stop doing that. There were a couple of things that you posted that were perhaps difficult, and I do want to remind the public, since you saw the red Xs up there, please remember that everybody comes to this work with the best intentions and in good faith. So let's just, you know, I appreciate the candor, but, you know, we all want to work with your committee, we want to work with the staff, and make this all come together. So I hear your recommendations, and I'm reminded of stuff that the Congress does. Social Security is a good example, where this blue ribbon commission will come out with a report, they'll do a study. It takes some political courage to do these things, and what does Congress do? Will they avoid any hard decisions and just kick the can? And I would say to all of us, I don't want us to be the U.S. Congress Board. I want us to be the Wyatt Earp Board, brave, courageous, and bold. So to that end, again, Dr. Garza, I don't know how to prioritize these things, but they have raised some challenges for us, and there are some things in here that are difficult, but probably necessary. So help us help you move forward on these things in the way that makes the school system function better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Velkoff. Mr. Stork.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. I guess I'd start by saying, FATE, I love you. I think it's an awesome, I really, I mean, it's the essence of what we should be doing, and the public-private partnership that it creates, and really the success that's been there for so many years. And Chad, I mean, you, obviously, there's a group of you, but clearly, you're leading that charge, have made that one of the most impressive, I'm sure, in the country. I know there's more we can do, because as entrepreneurs, we're always looking around, looking at other opportunities, but the ones you're doing particularly well, I mean, I think reflect very well, the housing and the cars in particular, but I love the development work on the entrepreneurs. And the dinner last fall, where you kind of spent some time talking about that, I think those are all real positive things for us. So I really don't have much else to say, except keep it up, and I'd love to see more entrepreneurial kinds of things. So anything I can do, anything this board can do, I'm here for you, and I'll be happy to support it in any way we can. So thank you all very much. FPAC, a couple of things. One is, do you intend the southeastern area boundary and the Richmond Highway corridor options to be the same? Are those the same things in your eyes?
No, but they might be correlated.
Okay.
The southeastern region is a little further down, a little further west than just the Richmond Highway corridor.
You mean that you would include South County, and Edison, and Hayfield and South County, is that the...
It goes out towards Lake Braddock as well.
Oh, including Lake Braddock, you would as well? Okay. And I share your concern, and you know, I have spoken about this issue many times, the southeastern boundary and/or Richmond Highway corridor options, we're really late on those. We need to get going on those. We've had some conversations recently, which I think will hopefully spur us along, and I think it's essential that we are out to the public this fall with some activities, because it isn't just the overcrowding that's here, it's really the renovation work that needs to be done, but renovation takes many years, and the money, in essence, is there, but there's a lot of planning, a lot of coordination, a lot of, I think, visioning that we're still doing. So, Dr. Garza, I appreciate our conversation this week on that. I know we've had some previous ones, but you're not alone in your concern about that. I think there is, I think there is some initial scaffolding that has to be done, initial kind of scoping that has to be done, which is really what I think you're hearing from staff, and even from myself, that I want to make sure we, when we go out to the community, we have something that, there's a decision process that they can see how it all can fit together. I absolutely don't believe in driving that in a particular direction, but I do want to make sure that the options that we have are ones that we ultimately could support, if that's the way the community goes. I know, again, our conversation earlier this week, that clearly was echoed by you, Dr. Garza, so, but we do, we are late getting to this issue, and I'd like to see us moving along. So thank you for your advocacy on that issue. CTEC, obviously, you all have done amazing work for so many years. Particularly, I was curious about the student learning plan. I know it's an issue that the board has had a lot of interest and love for, but not a lot of money to really make it happen, and I think a powerful way. Who knows what the future will bring? I know that's something that, they're clearly a strong support for it. But I particularly was interested in your reference to the career pathways and clusters. I see that as, I mean, number one issue that we seem to have with his parents and their lack of understanding or awareness of how this ties into their own child's future and interests. And I see student learning plans as being part of that. Did you all have discussions about that? Is there any kind of, you give us any background on that, or just more of an idea, more of an issue that you kind of had as a bullet point?
Well, I think mine has been more as being a parent, actually having one of the blackboard accounts that actually had that component to it, and to be able to share that as an opportunity. It probably is some of my business experience in terms of workforce development, doing many projects across the state, both healthcare and actually in manufacturing. The need to expose and get there, because many of the careers that we think of and know of may not be that same in five and in 10 years as these students move forward. Just think of computer sciences, you know, how that has changed and morphed. The technology is really pushing things, so to expose them as being part. I know my involvement in some state things, where you start to hear the numbers of students that are unsuccessful after one or two years in college, and finding that their career pathway wasn't where they wanted to be. Or having people who have got a college degree, and many of us may know of somebody...
I'm absolutely sold on your points. I'm just curious if the committee has, have you grappled with this any further than that?
It is actually one of the items that we are looking at early on in next year. It's actually been what we've requested to learn more about.
I strongly support that, and I strongly support us asking and getting kids to ask themselves those questions in sixth, seventh, in particular grades, and even eighth, but no later than then, because that is really our opportunity to help them find that path, that they may be able to at least find the certification, even if they don't do the higher education that they may need.
And just the connection to what school could be, or even if it's not a school, what company maybe is looking for that, or is it even an option in terms of a military?
Absolutely.
So that is not just always looking at, it may be a trade school more as being part instead of an academic school.
I strongly support that, and I don't think we're doing enough. So, last point I'll make, because I can do this as a follow-up, but the health and medical, there's a lot of effort in my part, given that's the industry that I work in, and the collaboration between you all and ACE. I frankly was not aware of that, so I really didn't understand that we had high school kids in classes with non-high school kids, if you will, and taking some of the courses. For whatever reason, I was never conscious of that. So that was a positive to hear that, and I don't know how developed that is. The other part of it is, and the thing, and I've mentioned this every year, that we have this meeting, is that in Montgomery County, we have people from Montgomery County and DC that come into our medical practice, and that can actually be there and work, but we don't have the same opportunities from Fairfax County and Virginia, because there's more restrictions in Virginia on what people can do, and that needs to be changed. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stork. Now, for go-backs, I have Ms. Evans, Ms. Schultz, and Ms. McGlockin. Is there anyone else who would like a go-back? Okay, you each will have four minutes. Thank you. Ms. Evans.
I don't think I'll take four minutes. I hope I won't. Just on the Stewart boundary, you talked about, that's one of the areas where you looked at the possibility that we would need a boundary study, and I do see the projections. I do feel I need to make the point, though, that you're looking at sending students to Annandale, and you know what happened to Annandale. You know, we just went through a really bruising and, you know, difficult, and to my mind, damaging boundary study there, and now we're looking at 89% capacity. So, I mean, are you taking into account that, you know, sometimes we do these things and then find that it's, the numbers are very different?
Yeah, I don't think we think that that boundary study is the best option for a number of reasons. What you mentioned, the geographics of getting kids from there over to Annandale, you know, we think a solution similar to the Bailey's Upper Campus might be a better option.
Oh, you did mention the annex, the Office Annex, and that's, okay. All right, well, I appreciate that. That was my only point.
Okay, Ms. Schultz.
A couple of things I didn't get to FATE earlier. I'm going to echo what my colleague, Mr. Stork, said. Dan and Stork, sorry, it's late. Meetings every night this week. Oh, God, what are we going to be like by tomorrow? I can't imagine. Okay, so on the heels of the Foundation luncheon today, and meeting with, you know, all of those business community members, I just, you know, I guess I'm maybe thinking big, like Mr. Velkoff, and wondering what else FATE could do. I just see such application for experiential learning and real-world experience that translates to skill sets that regardless of whether they go to college or not. And I do think that that's important. I still think we're bifurcating in our minds because of where we all are chronologically in our ages, you know, VOTEC versus, and we try not to, but I still think in our head that the bifurcation is there, that kids who are in FATE do go to college. But those potentials, I think, are almost limitless, and, you know, that's a big thinking cap thing of how to incorporate, you know, giving more opportunities like FATE presents, because that's where the rubber meets the road, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, we're absolutely open to that. I mean, we've spent a lot of time supporting as many programs as we can find that will participate in a fashion that works for us as well. And so we want to make sure, as I said earlier, that our focus still, you know, is on the student-run enterprises that we've had in the past, but then finding new opportunities where we can support additionally. We're open for both options. So anything that this board or the school system thinks are opportunities that we can participate in, we're certainly always happy to look at.
Capitalism and entrepreneurialism, you know, I just saw the little girl in Ohio, I think it was, who won her court case on making her little cupcakes at home. So, you know, let's start at 11 and just, you know, keep going. I had two quick questions on the FPAC, since Greenbrier East is mine, not only mine, but I actually went to school there. Was that something that was discussed with AAP? That's the one thing I don't know, is whether this was siloed, or the recommendation came from Carol Horn, or was this independently arrived at? I mean, how did this...
As we point out in the report, but it's a long report.
Right.
We actually invited Carol Horn to talk with us at our retreat, and from the information we gleaned from that discussion, plus some other, looking at the data that we've been looking at, that's how those recommendations came forward.
Okay. All right. And then, the last thing is, I just had a quick question about the islands. I mean, we seem to be very, like, island-focused. Is there a particular thought process that went into spending FPAC's time on looking at islands, and whether or not that, that's really, you know, that's like making the map look good, or really whether efficiencies can be gained? Because I think we're a little island-obsessed, and that at the end of the day, the kids are going to have to be transported to school anyway, so...
I can tell you, in the McLean-Langley area, it could make a huge difference on the capacity utilization of the schools in that particular area. And then there's just some, I'm sorry, in the McLean-Langley area, it would have a huge impact on the utilization of the schools, Cooper and Longfellow and so forth. The other ones are really more about efficiency. You know, there's Beechtree, for example, has, I think, three islands, you know, and we're just not sure how that came about. We think some of these things are legacy things that have just never been cleaned up. I'm sorry, we just think that these things are legacy things in the system that haven't been cleaned up yet.
But is it, but is the concept of, you know, a recommendation based on ridding ourselves of islands to make a map look good, or is it real achievement in efficiencies or balance? I mean, are you really talking about a wholesale boundary study? Because if you're talking about far-flung islands, then you're talking about a boundary study.
No, it's more, it's definitely about efficiency, transportation, utilization of the schools that may be adjacent to that particular school, that we're taking kids into a particular place, that there's capacity to place next door. So no, it's a wholesale look at the whole... So, no, it's a wholesale look at the whole thing, it's not just a map-making.
Okay, I thank you for my four minutes. Thank you, Mrs. Schultz. Next, Ms. McLaughlin.
A couple of things, I wanted to echo what Ms. Heinz and Mr. Velkoff had said, and I forgot to mention it earlier, that without question, this board and our superintendent have been talking about, how do we increase our delivery of pre-K instruction? It's a national movement as well. And as I recall, when we look at our capacity issues around the county, the question is, there's some places where we have capacity availability, but, you know, we don't have necessarily the K-12 students to put in those buildings. And so, I, I thought, since this is a work session, and Dr. Garza's listening, and our colleagues are listening, that I, I do think that, you know, hopefully, we'll get a chance as a board to weigh in and say, I think that is a very valuable piece of investigation that FPAC could be working with staff to looking into. I think it is time-sensitive that we try to do that. The other thing is that with the islands that Ms. Schultz was bringing up, when I read that, what I thought about is in Braddock District where, that I represent, we've got some really strange, little tiny, almost neighborhoods, where one neighborhood crosses the street to go to an elementary school that is not the feeder then for the middle and high school, and then, like, a neighborhood down the street does the reverse. So, those, to me, I thought right off the bat, those would be administrative changes, but, and it's something that I just think, again, our system is so challenged for time that some of these little things, but I've, I've had constituents say, it's kind of an easy one to fix. So, you, your report prompted me to think I should follow back with Superintendent and Mr. Plattenberg, because those are the ones that I think it is, it's cleaning up so that the kids have consistency in where they attend K through 12. So, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. The other thing I wanted to raise, Dr. Garza, is about how we staff these advisory committees in terms of using your leadership team. If I recall, some of your assistant superintendents even serve as a staff liaison to these advisory committees, and I think that, given all that they have to juggle with, I would like our board to work with you and talk about how we can best utilize your staff in a way that it doesn't become just another workload challenge for them, to be spread so thin, trying to work directly and attend these meetings with our advisory committees, that maybe there's another member of their staff that could certainly stand in their place, but I think especially your superintendent, your assistant superintendents, it's a lot to put this on their plate as well. And then, the other thing that I wanted to mention with the whole challenge of FPAC and trying to obtain information that they need, one thing that was shared with me is that concerns about any data or information that's given to FPAC, because they are a public working group, then it would need to be publicly posted, and then the challenges that staff would have if they're trying to work on, you know, data and/or reports that aren't ready yet. The CIP draft report would be one example. And so, I think that's something that we, again, as a board working with you, might want to talk about, how we wrestle that, because my, my thinking on that is, if we term it as a working draft, and this is, again, a working group that's trying to help all of us as a system, then being able to provide that to them without having to hold onto it and give it to them, at the same time, we give it to the board, because in other words, it just kind of creates a logjam. And so, I think that's something we have to kind of think about, in a way to remove the hurdles, and I, I think there's ways to get around that. But that was one of the key pieces that I think I heard, where our FCPS staff isn't wanting to obstruct, but they're wrestling with how do we put information out there in the public that we're still trying to, as a system, work through. And I think that's, that's a key piece of, then the collaboration of how does our advisory committee work and support that. Did I capture that correctly?
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. If you could just address that in your closing remarks, if you feel up to it. Okay, Mrs. Reed, and then Mr. Velkoff.
Thank you. Back to FPAC. I wondered, looking at your proposed charter, is the gist of what you're asking for is to reduce the ambiguity of your role and give you more specific guidance and direction from the board? Not putting words in your mouth, but is that really the intent there?
It does reduce some ambiguity, and it does sort of reorganize it, so it's clearer as to what's a process and what's, what's a mission, and, so that's kind of, there's not much new in there, it's mostly just reorganized.
Okay, well, it seems to me, though, that perhaps we can be better as a board about giving you specific tasks, and I think one has been raised here tonight, and maybe we'll have an opportunity to discuss that as a board, but that, the pre-K and facilities issue certainly seems one that's ripe for you all to dig in. You all have such stellar professional qualifications, I feel like we really need to, to focus you on, on some tasks where the board really needs the help. I mean, you're an advisory board, you know, to us, so I feel like that would be very helpful. Another one might be this idea of the tax credit, and yes, my eyes did light up, Ms. McLaughlin, when I heard potential revenue source. So, that might be another area that this board might, might ask, is there more to be explored there? I know you've mentioned that, you raised that issue. And then, the AAP, perhaps, that's another one, just to help us figure out how we even go about addressing that, and I know we will be addressing it, but, you know, that's very complicated, and so, to the extent that we can get some, some help, just even trying to address it. And last but not least, you mentioned several times in your report, the word crisis, and I couldn't let the evening go by without reiterating that. I mean, we've had such a nice polite discussion, but for two years at least in a row, you have mentioned that we are facing a facilities crisis. And so, I agree with you, and I feel like we need to have a little more urgency, and how we do that, I don't know, I mean, we've got a lot on our plates, but your message has been received. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Reed. Mr. Velkoff.
After, after making my suggestion about the work plan about pre-K and my enthusiasm, I am remembering that there is a process for tasking FPAC, and I, and I would just suggest that we all should remember to follow our own process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Velkoff. So, at this point, I will, since I've been so generous with everyone, I will take a couple of minutes just to speak my, my piece. On the suggestion that we approach the state legislature on these various issues, I think that's definitely well-taken, and we will liaise with Ms. Downey on that as we go into the new legislative cycle. And I, and that's something I know that you've been active with through your members, who have been working at the state level on it as well, so we will continue to push there. On FPAC, I'm the first to admit, this has been a rough year, and a lot of that is due to the change in staff, change in working methods, and so, I'm very hopeful that as we go into this next year, we will see a better working relationship between you and staff, and we'll certainly look into some of these ideas that the board has raised as well. With that, Dr. Garza, can you please take it away?
Thank you, Mr. McElhane. Again, as, as has been commented by a number of board members tonight, we do appreciate the time, the energy, the commitment you put in this work. It means a lot, and I will assure you all, I know that we don't find that the conversation's sufficient, your reports are very thorough, and we are taking them very seriously, and, and as we move forward, particularly as we're looking at strategic planning, I think your recommendations will be most instructive and helpful in that work. On FPAC, as I commented earlier, you know, I do think we have to be bold and creative, and I know that it may cause, you know, in times when, when resources are not a problem, things are easy to accomplish, but when resources are very constrained and tight, it does make the work certainly, certainly more precarious, and there seems to be more angst associated with it. I don't want you necessarily to comment it, but I did find it interesting that you all suggested that we need to pay for all of our maintenance, fully fund all of our own maintenance, and having just been through a very difficult budget year, a cut of over $96 million and over 731 positions, I don't know how we'd do that. But I do think we're going to have to be creative about meeting our needs, because resources are a barrier. I think Bailey's Upper Elementary is a wonderful example of thinking outside the box, and I think that school's going to be a school that we're going to be very proud of. I am interested in hearing your thoughts. I know that I'm maybe speaking out of turn, Mr. Stork, but we're just beginning to contemplate what the Route 1 corridor and how that might look, so I'd certainly be interested in your ideas around, maybe starting with that in terms of boundaries, right? And then, as I commented at an earlier meeting a month or so ago, I did suggest that I would like to meet with you all, and now that we've completed the budget process, and a host of board meetings over the last couple of weeks, I hope to be in a position to do that very, very soon. I know, I, I know I speak for my staff, we want to work with you, and we want to have a strong cooperative partnership, we want to take advantage of your expertise. We can't solve all of these problems by ourselves, we need help. And that goes for everything we do. These are all complex issues. With ACE, I appreciate your work. I will tell you, I am well-aware that the financial services staff has been made aware of your concern, and so, we're looking into that. If, in fact, we determine that we do need to invest some additional dollars around the maintenance of effort, we can handle that at year-end, which is coming up relatively soon, and we're committed to doing that, should that be needed. Let's see. On the CTE, oh my goodness, you were, you were, we're on the same page in the songbook, I will tell you that. I applaud the work, I thought this was well-done. I will tell you that this board has heard me talk a lot about us having a one-size-fits-all approach to getting a high school diploma in the Commonwealth, and that's something that's got to change. I think there's a window of opportunity, this board has long had very strong legislative programs. I anticipate, I don't want to speak for them, but I anticipate moving forward, that we will be making some very significant recommendations around opening it up and providing students the opportunity to explore careers, and these very exciting, we have some wonderful, vibrant programs, but the requirements of state graduation have, and most recently, the financial literacy have just continued to take a lot of those options away from our children, and has really stifled a lot of our programs. But I do think we have an opportunity, and I would really rather not go about it as a substitution kind of, I think we need to be more transformational and say, you know, what are the foundation courses, then beyond that, you know, let students' career follow pathways. And so, I'd love to get your ideas around that. And then, FATE, oh my goodness. I was so sorry, I missed the, missed the ribbon-cutting for the fire truck, but I have heard about it time and time again this week. It really caused quite the buzz, lots of excitement, enthusiasm, and it's things like that that really make, you know, investment in our children is very, very important, and we appreciate it, and the encouragement of students to be entrepreneurs and business leaders, and it's just, it's right in line with the direction of where we want to be as a system, with our port of a graduate and those skills necessary for success in, in life beyond high school. We very much appreciate it. And then, I will end on this, kind of to your point, Mr. Velkoff, is relevance makes rigor possible, and a lot of what you all talked about tonight is about relevance, right? Relevance. So, I think I want to just end on, we will follow back up with you, and I'll look forward to meeting with FPAC very soon, and we do continue to appreciate your support of our schools and interest in our students, very much appreciated.
And just so everyone is aware, the board members, if you have not already, please work with the committees to which you are liaisons on developing your charges for next year, and obviously, that needs to be done by the end of the fiscal year, so we will be moving into that very quickly. Yes, Ms. McLaughlin?
And I have a question about that, because I heard what Mr. Velkoff said, that we want to work through the process that we have in place for tasking FPAC to do things, and yet, when I think about all of our advisory committees, the charge itself, is it something that, yes, we try to shape with the committees based on this type of board dialogue? And so, is that what will happen then with also FPAC?
So, with FPAC, as I mentioned very briefly earlier, we are going to be addressing their revised charter as a board. I will be bringing that to a forum in the coming weeks, so at that point, we will have more dialogue around FPAC specifically.
About their, their charge for the following year?
Charter. They are a-
No, I understand it's their charter, but I'm asking about their charge for the upcoming new year.
Right. That is subsumed in their charter. We list out the different things that they work on.
So, they're unique in the way that we approach it compared to the other committees?
They are special.
But in terms of, you asked us to work with our advisory committees, but are we then bringing it back to, to the full board to approve each and every one of those?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you, everyone, this has been a rough week, we have another night tomorrow night, so hang in there.
Yeah, we're meeting every night between now and the end of the year.